We have to watch this pledge. We can begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
My job is tonight. Want to let everybody know, everybody, that in accordance with the requirements of the open meeting law, please be advised this meeting is being broadcast and recorded over Lunenburg Public Access. Call to order, we are all here, I believe we are expecting Paula.
We are.
Public comment, is there any public comment?
I have a board comment, if I may.
Sure.
I just wanted to comment that I've been an advocate for increased communication between boards, especially to the Board of Selectmen on committees that they oversee and appoint. And the first question I should have asked, I guess, before nominating anyone for the Open Space Committee is whether we had inquired about how, if they had an opinion on the membership of their committee. So I just feel like maybe in the future that would be something we would seek to do. And I also wanted to say that I also recall that the appointments for that committee were done just on paper and we don't meet the people. And I think it's unfortunate that we might, may not know all the people that are serving on a board that we appoint. And if we could perhaps have them in for appointments and reappointments and things like that.
Well, I fully agree with you. I believe that we could and we should have more interaction between the different groups, boards, committees, commissions, subcommittees, whatever. And just as a reminder, Open Space is an ad hoc subcommittee by Planning Board. So Open Space has been developed by Planning. So it wasn't a Board of Selectmen's group that we were appointing to. I don't think that would happen, would it? I think if...
Like charter review?
It depends. I mean, the Board of Selectmen can seat committees that have members of other committees and they leave it to that Board or Commission to appoint their representative.
Oh, true. It's just, it's how they determine, how they, how they plan to have the membership determined.
Correct.
Oftentimes they'll have one appointment from Planning, one appointment from Board of Selectmen, one appointment, one citizen at large. But the group that forms the committee is the appointing authority, I believe.
Right.
Correct.
But I think part of having the authority is also having some responsibility on communication and knowing, knowing each other.
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
I had a board comment from our last meeting, which I think kind of got cut off just based on the way we adjourned. But I was disappointed at the way things turned out at town meeting in regards to the potential prohibition for marijuana. I feel like this board worked very hard to give the citizens the ability to vote on that. And unfortunately, that was undermined by an oversight on somebody's part. And I think that was kind of a critical step in the whole process. I mean, we developed the bylaw, we developed the regulations, we had at least six public hearings. We witnessed testimony from members of the community. You know, to, to see people come to the podium and break down in tears over their fears of marijuana and then not have the ability for somebody to go to the polls and vote against marijuana and vote for prohibition is disappointing. And I, I didn't tally up the number of hours we put into that process, but to get to the town meeting floor and realize that, you know, a significant portion of our work was cast aside was disappointing, to say the least, so.
That was one of many disappointments from the last, the 11-plus hour town meeting. But I hopefully we can learn and work together more efficiently and move forward in a positive direction. Anything else? Okay, moving on to our first appointment, 493 Mass Ave, a waiver request.
And Mr. Chairman, I'm going to recuse myself from this discussion as I have an interest in this property.
Very good.
Hello. So, Kim Cole, 563 Mass Ave. So we have an office at 493 Massachusetts Ave, Gatsby Grounds. And we have constructed a sign. We're asking for a waiver for it. The sign is positioned as such where there's no blockage of the line of sight. And it was told to me by the building inspector that he wanted me to move it in. However, the whole, like, three quarters of the front yard of the lawn area is septic system. So basically by moving it in, we didn't want to disrupt anything for the septic system and have any, you know, we just didn't want to disrupt anything there. So I'm asking for a waiver for it to be, I think it's 20, it says 20 feet. And we measured off of the GIS where the property is at that time, you know, the online maps. And so I guess we're, the building inspector had told us that we were off, so.
Okay.
Does it not meet a dimension according to the bylaw?
The actual size of the sign is fine.
No, but the setback?
The setback.
Sounds like it's in question.
Through the chair, I think what it is, is in 2018, the special town meeting in the fall, the board added the ability for a business to place a 12-square-foot, non-illuminated sign by right without the need for site plan approval. And that requires a 25-foot setback. The standard sign requires a 20-foot setback. So, and again, I haven't heard from the building inspector. My inference is that the sign at Gatsby Grounds is 20 feet from the right-of-way. So it's off that five feet. So it meets all of the other criteria of the by right sign with a permit minus that five-foot setback. So what I'm hearing is that they're here asking for a waiver from site plan approval because they would be allowed to put the sign up through site plan approval at 20 feet. If, and they would legally be allowed to put a larger lit sign up. So I, that's...
I just want to make sure that it's within our purview to grant a waiver for a dimension, not the...
Well, you're not granting a waiver for a...
I have no problem with the sign. I drive by it every day.
Yeah. You're not granting a waiver for a dimension.
The size of the sign doesn't bother me, and the placement doesn't bother me either. I just want to make sure we're not overstepping our bounds with granting a waiver.
No, because what...
In favor of the waiver, as long as it's within our purview.
Her requesting indicates the sign is located 20 feet from the edge of property. So that would trigger site plan approval per the way that 6.5 reads.
So if we went through site plan approval, we could approve a sign 20 feet?
Correct.
Okay, then I'm fine with it.
So we're waiving site plan approval?
Correct.
Okay, that's fine.
Any input?
I move that we grant the waiver request for 493 Massachusetts Ave.
Second?
Excellent. Any discussion, further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you so much.
Thank you. So that was the length of our business.
Marjorie wasn't putting any minutes anywhere but right there.
Beautiful. So I did have a comment last week for, I don't remember which ones. Committee reports, Sewer Utility Enterprise Fund. It's not Sewer Utility Enterprise. It's either Stormwater, right? And that was the only thing that I noticed. So has everybody had an opportunity to review the minutes?
Yes.
We have two people that were not here before...
Doesn't matter, you can, they can vote on, on approving the minutes.
They can?
Yes.
Oh.
Attorney Costa has verified that. You don't have to have been at the meeting to verify, to approve the minutes.
Oh, good, okay. That, that clears things up for our last...
Do them all at once, or do we have to, if nobody has any comments on any of them?
Matthew did have comments on 42219. But yeah, I don't have any, there's no reason that you can't approve them all at once.
All right, so we have 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10 sets of minutes.
Did you want to do the 422 first since you had, and then we can do all the rest separately?
He can also just tell you, I mean, it was, it was a change to committee reports. It was changing the word sewer to stormwater for Utility Enterprise Fund?
Yeah, it was basically...
I mean, and your motion can include all the minutes and that change on those. If, if that's how you'd like to do it.
I'd make a motion that we approve all minutes between April 22nd, 2019, and June 10th, 2019.
With the...
With the Scrivners edit, as pointed out by the chair for 42219.
Second? Second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye. Committee reports, capital planning has not met. Stormwater Task Force, really not sure how many meetings we've had since our last committee report, but we've been in the process of putting out requests for proposals. We got two responses from Woodard and Curran.
Yes.
And from CEI. And we have yet to get together to discuss their proposals. We had one request for clarification, which resulted in a slight modification in both of their submissions. And I believe we're scheduled for July 8th?
July 11th.
July 11th.
We're here on the 8th.
We're here on the 8th, so. And other than that, that's about it for Stormwater. There's been discussions on forming utility, as it was in the last minutes. And then Agricultural Commission. We have been fairly focused on the upcoming farmers market, which the grand opening first day is this coming Sunday, June 30th. We're expecting to have upwards of 22, possibly 24-plus vendors. Should be a good...
Kidnapped them?
I'm sorry?
Did you kidnap them?
No, we, Go, Go Farm actually reached out to us.
Great.
To vend at the market. So we're gonna have Go, we're gonna have Go of Corn at the farmers market. We are so excited. Scott Babino is gonna be entertaining us on the first, the opening. Should be a very good time. We've been discussing, we've been discussing different things with APR properties. Jerry Lani has been in discussion with us, various other things to do with agriculture and promoting it. So the Open Space Ad Hoc Committee.
We haven't meet, met. We'll meet on July 22nd.
And that's to respond to the state's notes on the Open Space Plan?
I believe so, yeah.
Okay. Green Communities Task Force.
They have not met. The chair did update the Board of Selectmen on our next item we're looking at is the streetlight buyback. I think they're gonna be having a meeting in the near future.
Has there been any discussion about the Unitil proposal? About the clear the sky around the utility poles? I mean, would that have anything to do with that committee?
You mean the tree clearing?
Yep.
Depend, I guess it would depend on where the placement of the lights. I mean, if we buy the lights, then we may want to look at the location of the trees in regards to the lights, because we're the ones that are gonna own them and maintain them. I can bring that up to the chair.
I actually had a question about that, too, if you could maybe bring it up at a meeting. Are we sure that all the lights are necessary?
I'm not sure that we're sure they're all necessary. That question has been raised.
Okay. Because I know there's a cost associated.
I think it's, we have to buy them all or nothing. But I can't see why, once we own them, we can't eliminate some.
I think it's up to the Board of Selectmen to deter, yeah, to determine which ones are appropriate to have on and off.
I assume that would involve, like, public safety as well to comment on?
Sure, I mean, they have to be within a certain proximity of the road crossings.
But I mean, it could be that the town may be paying for lights right now that really have little to no value.
Sure, no, I absolutely understand what you're saying.
That's what the chair had mentioned at the meeting of the BOS, is that there are lights that are not working that we are paying for.
In addition, there may be lights that are there that are unnecessary, too.
Okay, right, but there are some...
So there should be some kind of inventory, I would think.
Yeah, we know exactly how many we have and where they're all located. I think, I don't know if they're gonna recognize that on our behalf, because I think it's gonna be, like, Adam set up to the Board of Selectmen to determine. And that would probably, I would assume, take some inspections at nighttime and then mark ones that obviously don't do anything if they aren't accomplishing anything, so.
Thank you.
But I think we have to buy them first before we would make that determination. And we could still do it, I'm sure, and then request through Unitil that they not be in service. That's another avenue if this doesn't move forward.
All right. Land Acquisition Committee?
They met two weeks ago and they met again tonight, but no update as of yet.
I got you. MJTC, Monetary Joint Transportation Committee?
I think I may have, it's the second week of every month. Is that the one? I think I may have missed it, because I think it was, like, the two days after our meeting.
Quite possible.
Probably.
So...
Do, do we inform them that we've appointed a new member?
Yes, we, we've let them know.
Oh, okay.
I would assume that they would reach out.
They should be, yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, there may have been a delay between the meeting and them being informed, but...
Okay, I'll make sure that I...
And we still don't have an MRPC rep, so...
Second?
Have you been able to set up your email?
Yes.
Okay. All right, so that wraps up committee reports. So next thing is master plan, request for proposal.
So we did get the $50,000 in the capital plan for master planning. And as we saw from the quote from MRPC, $50,000 isn't gonna get us a complete master plan. We did apply for the grant for matching funds of $50,000 to buttress the capital monies. We have not heard from that. So in an effort to start moving the process along, it was suggested by a member, and I discussed it with the town manager, and I think, and I agree with both of them, it makes a lot of sense, that the board rank the order that they would like to see the chapters completed in. Because if we get $50,000 now, don't get the grant, and something happens where the money isn't available in the next fiscal year, we don't want to be relying on, oh, well, we did, we just did them in order, they're listed, and we don't really need these two chapters, but we really would have liked these other two, because they're gonna help us move something else along or, or give a tone. So what you have in front of you is Chapter 4181D of Mass General Law. And this is, this is master planning, as Mass General Law outlines it. There's nine elements. I would suggest off the bat that 1 and 9 not even be in your thinking. Because what they are is they're omnibus, they cover the entire document. So 1 is a restatement of goals. So they go through and they write kind of a flowery, hey, happy Lunenburg, here's what we've determined are the goals. And implementation is just that, it's a schedule and, and matrix of what the goals are, what the objectives are, who's responsible for them, and when implementation time kind of is. So you, you really need the whole plan done to do those items. So really what we're looking at is some of the in-between stuff. The land use element, housing element, economic development element, natural and cultural resources, open space and recreation, services and facilities, and circulation. And I would say that 5 and 6, while certainly not complete, are substantially underway with the Open Space Plan that was recently completed. Some people won't include natural and cultural resources as part of what they think is covered in the Open Space Plan. I believe our Open Space Plan digs into that a fair amount and gives us a good basis for it. There's work to be done on either of those to ensure the goals jive with the visioning that we would anticipate doing for a master plan and for just beefing up the natural and cultural resources. But I, I think they're, they don't rise to the same level as maybe the land use or the services or that kind of stuff. So what I think it's, it's important that we kind of do is, is have the board choose a direction and, and get together and decide how they want to move it forward. And I do have an email from Paula. I spoke to her today and she is anticipated shortly, but she did put together some, some thoughts. And I don't know if you guys want to talk about it and then have me read her, her input?
I think she can express them when she gets here.
Okay.
So the housing element, isn't that, is that the Housing Production Plan that John Hume presented?
It certainly could be, but that's also now four years old.
Right. Well, is that the newest? Is that, no, is that the economic development we had prepared?
They, they came about the same time.
Okay. So 3 and 4 have recently been updated, yet to be approved?
Well, the Housing Production Plan was approved.
Okay, great.
They never, it was never converted to a master plan element. So we have a, a Housing Production Plan. And again, the, the master plan chapter is a little bit different and, you know, four years have passed and the way we're growing is vastly different than it was in 2014, 15. So there may be some analysis in there that would change the way the Housing Production Plan is, is maybe worded, or some of the, the thoughts or, or analysis in there. Economic development, again, is from, from 2014. It's been looked at, it was never accepted. I know that, that at the time it was looked at, there was some concerns about the things that were laid out in it and the direction or thoughts of where it was pointing the town. But the specifics of that were never really borne out.
So would it be fair to say that that has got the least amount of work to be formalized?
No, I think anybody that we, we hire will, will look to rewrite both of those in, in using more contemporary numbers and... And again, I think with, what's most important, and I think what's not in here as an element, but I think is something that the board should seriously consider as part of the, the proposal is a visioning session or sessions to set sort of the direction of the master plan. Because you can write a master plan to support anything or to support nothing. You can just be very general about it. And some communities use master students to write master plans because they'll do it inexpensively or free as part of classwork. And the statistical analysis is great and their recommendations tend to be a little more flowery and not as, as practical or implementable. And I think that the vision will, the visioning session will give you some direction that whoever the contractor is who's selected to do the plan can write recommendations that will support or bring to life that, the vision that the community has sort of put forward. Usually this is done through a large SWOT exercise, you know, or multiple SWOT exercises amongst different groups and general discussion to, to get a flavor, an idea of, of how people are, are approaching the master plan.
Anybody? I think that, I think that the Agricultural Commission would most likely want to weigh in on number 5. Have some input at least. And I can run that by them at our next meeting. And number 4, Economic Development, is one of our agenda items for tonight, for the director's items. Hoping that we can get that committee going and have them help on, on that element.
So I guess to me, 3 and 4 would affect 7. Because if we don't know, like, how and where we're gonna grow, we can't really forecast what, how services are gonna be impact, impacted.
True. I would agree.
And then the 5, I would like to get input from other boards. But I think that's, what we have would be existing. I don't think we're adding to that list, you know what I mean?
And I think what, what is important is we're talking about ranking how, what order we do them in. And I think the, the process of doing them, yeah, I mean, there's gonna have to be some outreach to other boards and committees, because the master plan covers everybody. And I think it, it's incumbent on, on this board and, and myself and, and the consultant who's, who's selected to work with other groups on their input for these chapters. And I think the visioning sort of sets a framework for where that work starts. And then that gives the, the contractor doing the work the ability to start it and then start soliciting input on, on that.
Mr. Chair, if I may.
Did you get, I'm sorry, Paula, did you get one of these, the...
Yes, I have one.
Section 81D?
Yep.
That's what we're talking about now?
Yep.
For a couple of these elements, for the housing element and economic development, making the assumption that whoever is awarded the work is gonna be using data that comes out of the census and housing starts and all that type of stuff. Is any of that information, like, quote unquote, due? In other words, are we at a point where, okay, in a year, all this information gets released? And the reason I bring it up is I just, I feel like if we select a chapter, we, we should be well aware of what information's coming down the pipeline, not that we select a chapter and we complete that chapter and then get all new information. And the chapter is obsolete before it's even printed.
No, so 2020 is the decennial census. And historically, I've, I guess this will be my third census in this profession. And it's usually three or more years before you see the data from the census that was collected, compiled, and rolled out. And they generally roll out the more standardy demographic kind of stuff first in really general terms. And then over time, they, they do it in like two or three releases. And the first release is all the, the really basic stuff, and then it digs into a little bit more. And then you get like the, the super, almost like metadata stuff. So I don't think that pushing something off one year is going to have a data effect. What the Census Department has done over the past 10 years or so is they've created the American Community Survey, which is like a census light to fill in between the decennial census. And so you may at some point get something that looks very census-y in the mail in an off-year. And what they do is they pick a statistical sample in different areas. They send it out, people fill it out, and depending on the size of the community, they have a rolling set of data that compiles and averages three or five years' worth of data. data and extrapolates what it is. And they show you what the margins of error are. And it's, it's not nearly as robust as the decennial census, but it gives you markers through that 10-year gap that you can use as a reasonable benchmark and can sort of follow things along. And you can look at it, and you know, you know, if the margin of error is 70%, well, this is kind of junk data. But some of their margins of error are less than 10. And you can, you can really look at it and say, oh, well, that's something that we can get into and can reasonably be used. And I would expect that for like the housing element, they would probably stick with decennial. And they may make notes about ACS says this, but these are the numbers we have to use. Economic development tends to be easier to chop up into those little bits because there's a lot of economic data that is constantly being circulated through the census.
And my only other comment is I feel like number seven, being the services and facilities, in my opinion, should be high on the priority list because we've been wrestling with the facilities issues for years now. And, you know, hopefully, the master plan element can help put everybody on the same page. Along those lines, I feel like in regards to the facilities specifically, we need to work in line with what the other boards and committees in those areas are looking to do, whether it's the schools or Board of Selectmen or whoever. I mean, the schools have a tremendous amount of our facilities. And, you know, clearly, we've got a lot of work to do there. And I would expect that this master plan reflects that input, as well as town meeting. Because I feel like, especially for the last few meetings, we've gone to the townspeople with ideas, concepts, and things have gotten vote, down for one reason or another. And ultimately, at the end of the day, the only thing we're going to be able to get done is something that gets approved at town meeting. And so I feel like whatever we incorporate in the master plan needs to reflect the feedback we've gotten from the community. So.
So I'm looking here online on our webpage, and 2002 looks like it was a comprehensive update of all the elements. 2007 was an envisioning report, which I think it was, seems to be that they were mostly talking about updating it. 2008, master plan review. And then 2010, they had an update, 50 years of planning in Lunenburg, which is a one-page. And then we had the 2014, 15, housing and open space updates. So 2002 seems to have been the last comprehensive. We're supposed to do this every 10 years.
Yeah.
I'm not entirely sure what we want to take on ourselves as a planning board, if we want to make a subcommittee for master plan updating to do some legwork and then report back to us to culminate, or?
Well, again, as I said, I think, you know, we're coming up on the end of the fiscal year. So as of Saturday, sorry, Monday, the capital money will become available, and the RFP can be issued to hire the consultants. Waiting on the grant, I expect that we probably won't hear about that until September. But putting the RFP out, get someone, gets the process started, and you get someone in here. The board is, you know, you can do the legwork yourself, but you may duplicate effort because whatever you do, when you hire someone, they're going to do it themselves anyway, because they've built that into their cost and...
That's, that's all well and good. I would still like to do the legwork. I think that any information that we can provide to anybody who wants to contract with us to provide this for us would benefit from the input and advice of people who live in town. That's always been my contention with farming out stuff, is that...
Oh, I mean, I think that consultation with people who live here with the board, with other boards, is, is well within the expectations. I guess what I'm suggesting is, I don't want the board to expend significant effort to collect census data or other statistical stuff that is standardized amongst whomever is going to do it, and become frustrated that whoever gets hired does that work on their own as well. Because having worked with the American Fact Finder website, the ACS website, it's not, it's not the easiest, simplest sit-down, and I can find the data I want right away. It's, you know, there's so many charts and so much data that is the same thing repetitively, just broken down in a different way. I think it's great if the board wants to set some parameters or, you know, I just don't want you to kill yourselves doing statistics.
No, and that would not at all.
And, you know, again, public information research that they're going to do anyway because that's how they do it.
Yeah, that's not at all what I meant.
Okay, then I misunderstood. I apologize.
Well, maybe I misspoke. I am often misunderstood. And oftentimes, it's because I misspoke. No, I think that, I think that the meat and potatoes needs to come from the town. And the data crunching, I mean, the master plan is not just the result of data crunching.
Correct.
It's, it's fine-tuning and specific identification of certain items and certain needs and expressions. So, I mean, I would just, I would, I guess, I guess basically what I would suggest of the members of this board is that we look through these different things. And if we have some strong feelings, if we have people that we know in town that have strong feelings, that we put them together and simply have something ready to share with the consultants.
Yep.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I agree with you that getting feedback from the town, as well as other boards, is a key component. When we talk about the money will become available on July 1st, while I understand that, I think that we have to go through what elements we want to, we want to focus on. Additionally, I feel strongly that creating an implementation plan has to be a key component. Having reviewed the open space plan, the economic component provided by MRPC, and the various master plan and the updates, there are many goals and objectives within those reports that touch on various aspects of the master plan, and many that are duplicated. I went through the economic development component and found it and developed a document outlining those goals that were captured in the economic development that I think are still relevant today. And I think that they're components of this master plan. I think we really need to review those. We need to have public input on those and an implementation plan developed. The, there's many of the desired goals that exist in all of the master plan and all of the updates have yet to be achieved. And I think that's due to the lack of an implementation plan. The 2007 master plan defined many goals and objectives that are still relevant, including a plan for multi-generational recreational space, both indoor and outdoor, an outdoor recreational plan for improvements to existing sites and acquisition of new sites, creation of an economic development committee, research and investigate methodology to provide varied housing. So all of those goals are still tied to all of these things that we're talking about. So when we talk about, you know, prioritizing, they are all linked. So when we develop an RFP, I think it's really critical, rather than just crunching numbers. To me, the key is getting feedback from people about the development of the plan, us as a board talking about, you know, what we feel are critical components, and then developing an RFP that mirrors our desires. So I think that's where we need to focus, is on the development of the RFP. If we have to prioritize, I certainly have gone through and prioritized. But again, I believe that in addition to prioritizing, there has to be a strong focus on implementation.
Now, is implementation one of the listed ones?
Yes.
The last one?
That's what I thought.
And as I said, it's omnivous, so it encompasses the entire document. So the implementation plan is nearly the last thing that you do because until all of the other elements are completed, how you implement it, when things get implemented, all of that is based on information contained within all of those other elements.
Agreed. But this town has spent a significant amount of money on various plans, money and energy. And they sit on a shelf, and we don't execute on those goals and objectives. And that's what I don't want to happen. If we're looking at spending $50,000 to $100,000, in my opinion, that has to include an implementation plan that truly identifies the steps to make things happen, the funds that are necessary to make happen, and a way to make them happen. Because I think that in all of the plans that this community has spent, we have fallen down on executing them.
I would agree with that. And to follow on those comments is that if the implementation plan was lacking in the previous, then maybe that is, maybe that should be the first one that we focus on, so that we can not only start to develop the new elements of the new master plan, but we can also apply that implementation to the previous non-implemented master plan goals.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, just to continue, I agree with you. I also think we need to look at the open space plan, which is a subcommittee of this board. There are many things in there that are identified as goals and objectives. I think we need to look at that in parallel with looking at the previous master plans and determine what of those plans that were identified as needs are still relevant today. What do we agree with as a board? And to me, if those are still relevant and desired by the community as a whole and this board, I think we need to develop a plan to implement those.
Yes.
Did we get a cost per chapter?
It's about $12,000.
Okay.
Give or take.
And does it vary greatly, or?
No.
Okay.
So you'll find that stuff like the open space is much less expensive because a lot of that work is done.
So essentially, if provided we're awarded the grant money, we essentially have pretty close to all the funds available.
Correct, yes.
Through the vast majority of this.
And again, I think to some of what your point is, Paula, getting feedback and outreach and input from the other boards and committees prior to the development of the RFP, what's the goal on that?
My point is, I just talked about some of the things that were in the previous 2007 plan, that I think are absolutely, we have talked about as a board.
Sure.
I have seen the prior board talk about. They remain relevant. If you pull up the economic development plan that was done by MRPC, you know, in section two, they talk about the goals. Utilize a town website to promote economic development. To me, is that a goal of this board and of the community? And if so, how do we implement that? Revisit recommendations in the Lunenburg Priority Development Priority Preservation Report. And that talks about forming an economic development, a redevelopment of brownfields, develop a computerized database of available commercial properties, facilitate the existing permitting process. I don't want to spend $100,000 to have someone come back with these same goals and objectives for us as a community.
Sure.
If we believe these are goals and objectives that are still relevant, the RFP, in my opinion, should be focused on, okay, this is one of our goals and objectives. We want you to develop an implementation plan in order for us to achieve that goal. Because I don't want to spend $100,000 and have basically the same thing, saying, you need to do this, you need to do that. We know that. We've known that since 2007 and 2012.
Mm-hmm.
So why are we going to spend $100,000 for someone to tell us it again? So I would prefer to spend that money on having it done, on someone developing an implementation plan. I don't want to just go through this as a futile exercise.
Sure.
And let me just go through the other things that I think are, think are important. You know, this economic development plan that was paid for through the funds through the state, through MRPC, I think are still irrelevant. Those two that I just talked about, review adequacy of current zoning. And it talks about conduct a review of current zoning bylaws, determine their adequacy for commenting desired land use and development. I believe that's something we as a board should do. We should talk about.
And the board has been doing that.
Right.
Fairly consistently for the past four years.
Right. But I think when we talk about economic development, in my opinion, they are strongly tied.
Yes.
So I think that's a workshop that we need to have. Prepare a retail market study to identify potential businesses. And MRPC did some of that, but they weren't able to go through a full market study. I think that maybe rather than spending, you know, $12,000 on a chapter for us, for someone to tell us to do that, do we put the money into that? And that's why the article was worded to also allow for implementation. So if we need to do a market study, direct some of the money to a market study. If, so I think we need to go through these past documents and really have a workshop about them before we start going forward and because, and be in a rush to put forward an RFP. Identify new areas or expansion of existing areas in town suitable for commercial and industrial development. That was one of the goals. Can you, can you continue to support the municipal building reuse committee? Well, obviously, we know that that's something we need to focus on. And Tanner just talked about it on the facilities, and that would be very high on my list as well. But my point is, rather than saying we're going to prioritize these chapters, I think we need to go back, look at the work that's been done. Do we agree or disagree with the recommendations regarding those elements? And if we do, instead of focusing on spending $12,000 just to get a chapter done, should we redirect those funds towards a research study, towards developing an implementation plan? To me, that's a better use of funding.
And before you got here, we were talking a little bit about, just in general, the master plan. And what I was saying is that before any of the work on the chapters would happen, it would make sense to do a visioning or visioning sessions to see where the community is at in reference to, I mean, the last visioning session was at least 2007, I believe. It probably wasn't then. It was probably 2002.
No, it was 2007.
They did do visioning in 2007, so that was 12 years ago. And I don't think there's anybody who would argue the community hasn't changed.
Absolutely.
Significantly over that time. And I think that even in the last year or two, some of the discussions around economic development and what is it, do we want it, if we want it, how do we want it?
But why can't we, as a planning board, develop that visioning?
We can. We certainly can.
Before we do an RFP.
That, and if that's the way you'd like to do it, we can do that.
You know, I think we can identify the elements, identify the recommendations put forth in the prior plans in both the open space plan, the MRPC economic development plan, and our 2007 plan, and say, these were the goals and objectives. We want feedback from the community on whether you agree with these goals and objectives. And if they do, and that's not something that we need a consultant to do for us.
No, and I...
And if they do, then I think that that's going to mold how we develop that RFP.
But I think that's different than a visioning session. That's...
I disagree.
I disagree too. I think we should have a visioning session to review the implementation of the previous plan and pick from that the starting points for the future.
And if they are additional, then great. But I don't think we can throw away all the work that's been done.
And I'm not suggesting throwing it away. I'm saying I think that what you're talking about, I think, is valuable. I don't think, that's what I picture as a visioning session. A visioning session, to me, is when we come in with nothing. We don't say, what do you think of this stuff? We come in and say, hey, Lunenburg, citizens of Lunenburg, we're here. We want to talk about what you like, what you want the town to look like, and do essentially a SWOT exercise, and use that to build off of what people are looking at, and then talk about, you know, okay, we've identified these strengths. What can we build off of these? We have identified these weaknesses. What do we need to do to?
I think you can do both. I don't see why you can't have a visioning session or have a couple different visioning sessions.
Yeah, and I guess that's...
That potentially you do both of those.
Yes. And I think you can, I think the two being separate, though, has some benefit because in reviewing what's been done, you're saying, are these still relevant? Should we still do them? Do we want to move forward?
It's a basic question, Adam. Economic development. How does the community feel How does the community feel about economic development? How does the community feel about open space? I think, in my opinion, if you just say, okay, we're a blank slate, just tell us, it's going to be very difficult to frame the conversation. I think that we can talk about each element and say, okay, this is the work that's been done, now we want your feedback. Do you agree? Do you disagree? What do you like about Lunenburg? What do you dislike? What do you think about-
And if that's how the board wants to do it, that's fine. I think that framing the conversation in a visioning session eliminates the purpose of visioning.
Okay.
Because the idea is to not frame it, is to have people come and sort of be all over the place, and, you know, it's kind of like that thing, it's like brainstorming. There isn't a bad idea, there isn't a bad vision, there isn't a bad thought. And as you sort of start to look through it and narrow it down, you find that, you know, someone said something over here, and someone said something over there, and they said two completely different things, but when they explain them to each other, they're coming from a similar place, and we kind of, and I think when you frame it, you force people to say, oh, I like that or I don't like it, or I'm in that box or I'm out of that box. And, you know, you said, it's a simple question, do we want economic development or not? And to my recollection, we spent countless hours having that conversation to no final resolution between the Board of Selectmen and previous planning boards. And so, it's not a simple question of do we want it or not, because economic development means something different to everybody. Some people see it as bringing in Amazon and Walmart, some people see it as, let's rezone everything commercial.
But I think that you put that out there, and that's when you have the conversation. And you're going to hear from people, well, we want it if it's this, we want it, because I think that you've got to at least outline the elements. And in my opinion, I don't think that putting forward, you know, the previous recommendations and looking for feedback on those hurts the conversation. And I don't have a problem if we do it in two sessions, but personally, I think saying, you know, we're going to have no visioning, I'm seeing a meeting with no structure, and I'm not in favor of that. So, I don't, I think we have to talk about how we do that first visioning session.
I think there's structure, I just don't, because you structure it through the SWOT exercise. And so, everyone breaks out into small groups, and you talk about strengths, you talk about weaknesses, you talk about opportunities, you talk about threats. Then you come back, each group presents their list, you put everybody's lists up, and you hand out five sticky dots to everybody, and they get to place them next to the things that they agree most with. And then you start to distill that list down into a list of strengths, a list of opportunities, a list of weaknesses, and a list of threats. And that gives you a basis to start talking about, okay, this is what most people have seen, where do we want to go with these things? And it opens people's minds, and I'm always surprised at some of the things that come up and how consistent they can be, but how maybe off the radar they are at times.
So, personally, I think we have a couple of visioning sessions as a board. We talk about the previous plans, we go through them as a board in a workshop setting, and then we can mold the RFP. Because I'm not, personally, I'm not ready to go out for an RFP on specific chapters until we look at the past work and what's been done. Because I think what we may want to spend money on is not necessarily the rewriting of the plan, but creating an implementation plan, or revisiting components of the plan, but not the entire chapter. Because I think we've done, there has been a lot of work, there's been a lot of effort, and we have a lot of information and feedback from our community that I think that that's, as the chairman said, I think that that feedback should mold what we do as an RFP.
Mr. Chair, if I may, to me, I'd like to just eliminate the stuff that we have already worked on, so to speak. Like, Adam mentioned that one and nine, number one is essentially just a summary of the plan, so, you know, that's pretty simple and straightforward. So, once the rest of the plan is, you compile it and you just craft the goals and policy statement, which is basically just regurgitating everything else that's in the plan. Number nine is the implementation, which you can't really do until you have the plan done, because you don't know what you're implementing until the plan's complete. Five and six, we've already done quite a bit of work on with the Open Space Plan and the resources. So, in my mind, the housing element, and I'm assuming this, has a lot of statistics built into it. And I don't think that this board or the town is in an ideal position to wrestle with all the statistics. So, in my mind, that would be one that we would look to have somebody outsource. The same could be true for economic development. And then number seven, in my mind, is a super high priority. Eight, to me, the circulation element, that seems pretty simple, straightforward, and we probably have a lot of the data already based on, no?
I would say always, seven and eight, outside of places that have some sort of GIS or engineering department. Seven and eight usually would be something that you would hire a professional to do. There's a lot of mapping, there's a lot of traffic data analysis that goes along with that. I mean, yes, we could get the data, because MRPC has it.
But we don't want to wrestle with it.
I don't have the education or skill to analyze that in the way that-
Figure, worst-case scenario, if we tackle three, four, seven, and eight, that's four chapters, we're still within the fifty thousand dollars that we've been allocated, and we've got the other components that arguably, we've got the vast majority of the heavy lifting done, that we can kind of pull this thing together. You know, I agree a lot with what Mrs. Bertram has been talking about in terms of implementing what we've already got, and, you know, crafting an RFP that points us in the right direction. But at the same time, I look at some of these elements and I question how much real impact it has on the community in terms of what you actually see for tangible results. My best example, I guess, would be, you know, we created the Village Center District. And correct me if I'm wrong, but I can't look at one property in the Village Center District that is now been redeveloped and has a new use because of all that zoning work that was done.
The first one was a single-family home, which was restricted.
So, you know, a lot of time and effort went into that, and-
The Dragonfly Cafe.
Oh, I'm, you're right, that was the first one.
The Dragonfly Cafe would not have occurred without the Village Center District.
Yes, you were right.
Which is a very key component of our community at this point.
But in terms of the whole scope, you look at the thousands of properties.
It's brand-new. It's brand-new.
But it's one. And so, I'm not trying to, you know, make light of any of the conversation, I'm just, my lens is that we need to do this right, we need to be careful about how we do things, but in terms of economic development, we can only encourage certain things. We aren't in a position that we're going to make any of this stuff happen. It's up to the market. You know, there's a lot of vacancies-
I disagree.
In the center of town, and you can't, I just, I don't want to get into the weeds of the situation and put too much emphasis on any one component, because at the end of the day, in my opinion, you can create opportunities, but it's up to entrepreneurs and developers and business owners to take advantage of those opportunities. And that's all relative to what other communities in our area are doing, you know, highway access, roads, and so on. You know, we can craft zoning, that creates an opportunity, but that doesn't necessarily mean that somebody's going to take advantage of it. And I think we're just in a position where I'd like to see us moving forward and getting something done, and hopefully not be too concerned about all of the minutia, because at the end of the day, it's the market that's going to determine how a lot of this plans out, you know, so.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I would say that it is up to us as a community, having gone to several seminars and events on economic development, one of the key responsibilities, if in fact we do as a community want some type of economic development, is to market yourself. And we, as a community, do not market ourselves. If a site finder is looking for a specific site, our website does not make it easy to do that. And there were several recommendations in the MRP study that talked about ways to, and that was the number one, was creating a website that would, geared toward economic development. So if a site finder is looking for something, he can quickly go and say, okay, this is the population, this is the available workforce, these are the available properties, this is what they're zoned. That was the key. The other thing, when you talk about other surrounding communities, one of the key strategies that was talked about in one of the last ones that I went to, was partnering with other communities and building on each other's strengths. We don't do that. So there are many things that if in fact we want to do it, yes, the market is driven, but we have to market ourselves, and I don't believe that we do that. And if we go back to the component that MRPC did, there are several recommendations outlined in that for us to do, in order to make this more business-friendly.
Well, I disagree with you, Paula, because we do market ourselves. We've got a recently formed business association, and they've been doing fabulous leaps and bounds, forward movement. The economic development studies that have been done over and over and over again, mostly by the Board of Selectmen, have gotten all kinds of public input that the town manager and the land use director put together to define the Economic Development Committee that they had voted to approve, and it involved mostly existing businesses, agricultural and farms. And those people are also advertising themselves and putting themselves out there. And that seems to have been the one resounding commonality between the public input that we got and the outreach that we did on it. And when that was put together and presented to the Board of Selectmen, they tabled that committee. So, we're going to put the committee back together, hopefully, shortly, and we'll have their input as well.
I'll read directly from MRPC. Put the town's economic development information on your webpage. It should include the top employers, contact information, economic, demographic, labor, education, transportation, utility, infrastructure, a listing of available commercial and industrial space and/or current future projects. This is the easiest and least costly way to market your community. Most developers or business persons who are searching for information about Lunenburg will look here first. So that was the first recommendation. Then it talks about doing a market study. MRPC obtained a market profile for the town of Lunenburg, this was, I believe, in 2012. A retail market study draws on information of a variety of surfaces, mainly sources, mainly the U.S. Economic Census, to determine the amount of purchasing demand. It compares the sales standards for typical business to whether the demand is being met. So it goes on and on. So, there is work to be done on our part if in fact we want to promote economic development. And this isn't from me, this is from planners that were asked to do a plan, which again, has been sitting on a shelf, and we haven't delved into what they recommended. So, we can pay somebody fifty thousand dollars or a hundred thousand dollars and put another report back on the shelf, if that's what this board wants to do.
Can we read?
If we talk about prioritizing, number seven would be my first. Number two, in my opinion, would be, the, number one would be services and facilities, number two would be economic development, which is number four. Number three would be land use, number four would be open space, number five would be five, number three would be six, and number eight would be seven.
What about three?
Would be six.
Six, okay.
Yep. My point is, we should review what we've done and decide what we want to write an RFP for. Because otherwise, we're going to do exactly what we're going to do, we've done over and over and over again. The Open Space Plan, which you talk about being mainly done, there were many recommendations in the Open Space Plan that directly related to this board and action by this board, which has not been done.
We should also review what's been done by other groups and-
Absolutely.
Yes. I think that it would benefit us to have someone from the Lunenburg Business Association either submit to us something at their leisure or potentially have an appointment, so that we can get a feel for where they've, because I understand that they've made great progress with that group.
And that would be great to know. So we don't do an RFP that asks for something that's already been done. An Open Space Plan, there are many things in there and goals and objectives that say, the planning board should do this, you should focus on this. Let's find out what those plans say, so that we can model an RFP to achieve those objectives. That's all I'm saying. Otherwise, we're spending a hundred thousand dollars of a townspeople money, and a lot of it will be repetitive of the plans we already have.
Just for clarification, it's fifty thousand of our money in-
Well, it's fifty thousand of our money right now.
There is no free money anywhere.
It's still taxpayers' money.
No, I just want to make sure, we got fifty on for this fiscal year.
We can pretend the grant is all Weston's fifty thousand, though.
Yes, yes.
No, it's not.
Would it be possible to see samples of RFPs that maybe other communities have done or we've done in the past?
Yeah, I can see what I can ferret out.
Just so we kind of have an idea as to, you know, how it's crafted and what we may want to tighten up for this particular.
Yeah, not only recent RFPs, but also for similar demographic towns?
Yep. I just think it'd be helpful to have-
That's going to be a little bit more difficult.
Well-
Only because, well, they might not be contemporary.
Yep.
What do you mean?
He said, for similarly demographic towns, the RFPs.
Uh-huh.
So, normally what I would do is reach out to other planners and say, who's recently done a master plan RFP? Can you send it to me? So I might get Boxborough, Brockton, Dartmouth, and whoever.
Boxborough would be good. Dartmouth, no.
But, you know, finding another town of twelve thousand people that's primarily residential and agricultural is kind of a shot in the dark that they've done an RFP recently, and that if they haven't done one recently, that they still have the document that they used to solicit proposals available.
All you can do is your best.
Yeah, so I mean, that's why I say, you know, demographically similar might be difficult, but getting RFPs won't be difficult in and of itself.
Well, my thought process would be, why not contact any of the consultants that respond to RFPs and say, they've got the documents, they get them all the time, and say, you know, in the last six, twelve months, can you give me copies of RFPs you've responded to? You know, that might be a better way of doing it. All the information is consolidated. Each town may only issue one RFP every ten years for a master plan, but a consultant probably gets an RFP every day for one.
They're not going to want to do that for free, though.
Yeah, I mean, I can certainly ask, I don't know that that's-
Worth a shot.
Yeah.
I just feel like if we had a couple of them to review, we could look at it as a board and then hone in on, you know, the areas that we want to make sure are addressed appropriately. And, you know, getting back to all of the work that's been done, that we haven't implemented things, I feel like that's work we can start doing right away. That doesn't, that's not necessarily tied to this RFP. You know, I'm sure there are certain elements in that master plan that are, haven't been addressed.
If the board wants those statistics put up, that's easy enough to do. The listing of available commercial industrial properties is less easy, but some of those other things, we could, I mean, we could work with the IT director to create an economic development page, under the planning board page, and put that stuff up.
Now, was the Economic Development Committee formed by the Board of Selectmen?
We'll get to that.
Okay, because-
That's why it's on here.
They disbanded it, correctly.
Yes, they did.
Okay, I'm just making sure.
So I guess when it relates, as it relates to us marketing ourselves, if we're going to do something like that on the webpage, another thing is, what services and things are we lacking in town? That would, you know, things that we need in town, businesses that we-
MRPC's report was awesome. I don't know if you've gotten it.
It was.
It was amazing. I mean, there's-
I have an extra copy, if you don't have the one from last week.
I think this was in our packets, wasn't it?
It was. It was in your packets last week.
Well, I've got like three copies of this.
Could I have one?
Probably mine, yeah.
It's got my initials on it, buddy. Pass that down to Paula. I've got another one, you can have, Greg.
I got one.
I just, like it-
Oh, you gave him one of yours.
Yeah.
You know, the data- You know, the data, I agree with you, Matt. It was, it was an awesome report. The statistics may need to be updated, but we don't need to go back and redo the whole element.
Now, see, I, as I recall at the time, there was some concern about what was in the element, and I don't know that the details of people's concerns ever got borne out.
Well, we never really had, we had one meeting that ended abruptly, and we never revisited it.
Correct. But specifically to the, to the positives and negatives of availability of stuff, the, the details in that report were amazing. The, the number of categories they covered and the results. They must be all at home, that's all right.
Do you want another one?
So one of the recommendations within this report was to do a retail market study. And they talk about the fact that they did part of it, but perhaps it would make sense to do, go out to market for a recent, a market study. Maybe that's something we want to do as part of that component, rather than spending $12,000 for someone to rewrite this. That's my point.
So the awesome data that I was talking about is pretty much the last two or three Study area, retail market analysis. It identifies gaps and strengths and...
Right, the leakage, yeah.
Yep. This, this was extremely impressive to me when they first came out with it.
Are we talking about this again?
No.
That's just the updated, this is the per-town meeting, so that you have it. Because it won't be into your, into your books for a while. Because it takes General Code a long time to update it. In terms of compliant, compiling everything, do we, as a town, have the resources to put all of this information in somebody's hands to, like, create the final document? In other words, if we have a consultant work on three chapters and we feel like a couple of the chapters, we've already got the information done, like the open space plan, do, who do we turn to to compile this all together and create the final version? That all ends up on your desk? Okay.
And, yeah, I mean, that's something that we can do. I mean, it's something I've done before. It might not look like the consultants, but...
Well, and I'm wondering if there's anyone...
What it looks like is only as...
Yeah.
You know, as long as the information's in there.
Yeah. And I'm wondering if there's anyone in, like, the school system that could serve as editor.
Sort of dress it up.
And wordsmith it and just proofread it and so on, but...
And then number two, the land use element, land use plan element. Given that there are a number of different types of land use, I'm wondering if we could reach out to different people involved in different uses to get input to compare so that we can not only prioritize number two out of the nine, but we can prioritize the different types of uses and how to support them moving forward. One of the...
I think this is, it's more of a 10,000-foot view of the town and how the land is, is currently used, and if there should be changes to facilitate other thoughts and visions that the town has.
So it's like the photo on the wall at the Ritter?
Sort of, and it, you know, it would, it would also look at, you know, if, if the town's looking at economic development and says, oh, we, we might need to expand our commercial zones, it would look at what land makes sense to be used commercially that isn't currently. You know, would one look at the space on Electric Ave from West Street to 2A? Would one look at 2A, from, from 2A up Chase Road to the commercial zone? Which of those areas makes more, you know, it, just how does it, how does that public land that we own interplay with the private land? How do those uses work together? Is there areas that are maybe used in a way that could be increased to the benefit of the residents in the town? Or are there areas that should be decreased over time in the way they're used to protect public lands or sensitive environmental habitats, that kind of stuff? So it's really, it's, it's looking at how we actually use the land, not necessarily how it's zoned, and how that furthers the, the goals.
Sure. I, I guess, I'm, my mind is always going to continue to go back to farms, farming, and agriculture. I'm the chairman of the Agricultural Commission, and I have, I have tried to represent that group since I've been on planning. And it's, it's a very important part of the town. It's, it's been my life, and I know that there's a great number of people in town that feel that same way. I know that there are a lot of newcomers that say they came to town for the plant, for the farms and the vistas and all that, but when it comes down to do anything to help them, provide for them, to facilitate them, the conversation changes. So I'm, I'm just going to continue to be a watchdog for that. So what are you looking for us to have for input as far as the RFP?
Nothing. I mean, more of a discussion on how the board wants to move forward. I, I've heard strong opinions from a few of the members. I guess, to me, it would be important that the board choose a direction, whether it's doing the visioning and identifying, you know, what they want to implement and what they want to update, or to collectively choose chapters that they want to implement in the master plan, or say, listen, we really need one more workshop to sit down and talk about this more, and choose a direction from there. I, really, my goal was to start the conversation of, we have this money coming up. We've talked about everything to do with master planning and how, and what, and why, and where, and we need to start to, to sort of push it into, into a stream and a direction and, and decide where, where the board wants to go with it.
Personally, I'd like to have one more conversation. I think looking at RFPs from other communities would be very helpful and provide us kind of a steering direction.
Okay.
And I think that it gives all of us an opportunity to go back and look at the goals and objectives of the open space plan, relook at this economic development component, and, and relook at the, at the previous master plans, and identify what each of us feel were important goals and objectives in those plans that are still relevant. Have another conversation, and then really work on an RFP, perhaps have a visioning session before we do that, and then really work on an RFP as a board to, and, and put something out. But I don't think that we, I think that we need to take the time necessary to develop an RFP that's going to give us our, our goal.
I liked your previous comment about backing up and taking a look at the implementation that had not been followed through on the previous plan.
I, I agree.
If, if there are copies of the 2002 master plan, which I think was 160 pages, do you...
I don't think I have any, I think I may have a hard copy.
They're on the website.
But the, the digital version is on the website.
Yeah.
Well, I personally, as much as I like the digital stuff, I really like to be able to have little scribble notes on, on...
If you would absolutely want a hard copy, I'm happy to make one for people. I'm not going to go back and make 560-page documents and bring them in, have three of them or four of them left here. So if you really want a hard copy, let me know.
I would like one, please.
And, and we can get you a hard copy.
I'd like one, too.
Yes, I prefer hard copy as well.
And if you could sign it for me, that'd be great, too.
I didn't have anything to do with that one.
True, an attested copy.
Doesn't need to be notarized or anything, just...
So that was three?
Yeah, I'll take, because I'll, that's how I read at home, and I do the same thing right in the morning.
Five.
You're going to end up doing it anyways.
If any of us leave one on this table, we're going to be in trouble.
But I think Paula has a good point. We can't just go in there with a blank slate. I think we've had a lot of discussion, and there's a lot of good information. I think we should decide where we want to go and have the RFP help us get there.
I agree, too, that it's always been a pet peeve of mine that we do these studies and then forget about them, as you said.
Mm-hmm.
So I will say, I don't know that I'll be able to get you RFPs in a reasonable amount of time for you to have looked at them and discussed them on June 8th. I'm off the rest of this week, and then with the holiday week...
You mean July 8th, right?
Did I say June 8th? I meant July 8th.
Yeah, July 8th.
Yes.
That would be...
Yeah, well, it'd be really hard to go backwards. But I don't, I don't know that, between making the request and actually getting the documents and getting them to you before the holiday, and then having the holiday weekend, I don't imagine you're all going to sit around doing planning board stuff July 4th weekend, at least not all weekend. So I, I would propose the 22nd, or trying to meet on the 15th.
Moving July 8th meeting to the 15th, or...
Or just having one to look at just the RFP and not putting any other items on that, and trying to do something relatively short.
Can you also resend the newest open space plan?
Sure.
Because there are a number of recommendations in that as well.
The only other thought I had was, I feel like a lot of what's going to be incorporated in this plan is subject to the support and action of the Board of Selectmen. So I'm not sure at which point in this process we need to get on the same page with them, but I would assume that we want to do that sooner rather than later.
Um, so... Can you, and I guess I'm, I don't understand what...
Well, I mean, if you look at, like, a high priority for me is services and facilities because we've been wrestling with, you know, the five buildings and so on, and a lot of what happens at the facilities is subject to the approval or disapproval of the Board of Selectmen.
You mean the actual goals and objectives or implementation of it?
Yeah.
So I, I think once you start getting into the writing of that chapter, there's a lot of interplay between this board and other boards and departments. I know we've had the discussion about a master plan committee before, and I know that Paula is cautious about that. The board may wish to form a master plan committee that includes members of the Board of Selectmen, the Council on Aging, the Finance Committee, the, whoever you decide is important to be in there, and members of this board to handle some of the discussions with the consultant, to work with the consultant on the formulation of the, the different elements that they work on, the implementation. And if you're well represented from each of the committees, the members of that should be going back to this body, the Board of Selectmen, whomever else, and having discussions about, we had a master plan implementation committee, we need this input from this body, let's talk about it. And I, I find that to be a more successful strategy than the planning board saying, okay, we're going to appoint ourselves the master plan committee, and we're going to be the planning board and the master plan committee at the same time. You're more than welcome to do that, and it can be successful, but you spend a lot of time going from group to group to group as the planning board, saying, hey, we're doing the master plan, and trying, having to explain the whole thing each time, and then having the conversation about that. Whereas if you have a member or members from that body, much like the charter, involved constantly, and then going back and reporting and discussing and bringing that information back.
I want to be clear about why I was cautious. When we talk about a master planning committee, if, if the formulation of the RFP and the, we have this discussion as a board, and then we decide, once we've, we've gone, we've developed an RFP, we know where we're spending the money, and we know, and then we want to appoint a committee to assist with the development of those individual modules, I have no problem with that. Where I had a problem was taking this discussion outside of the board, and that I'm not aware of.
Oh, that's, okay. Then I, either I misunderstood or we hadn't gotten to that level of granularity.
We had not.
I would like to further outline that Section 81D is 81, the entirety of 81 is describing the, the roles, responsibilities, and requirements of a planning board.
Correct. I mean, the, the function of master planning is the planning board.
So it was deemed that way by the state, not by us or the town or anybody?
No, not at all. But many, many, many communities use master plan committees for the simple fact of bringing the various perspectives to the process of developing the actual plan. Ultimately, the planning board has to adopt and sign off on the master plan. I would even go a step further and suggest that, at the point the board feels the plan is complete, present it to town meeting as a report, and put an article on for town meeting to endorse the master plan, just as a sort of further ratification that it is the, the plan of record for, for the community on the items that are outlined in it. But I mean, I think that's far enough in the future that we don't have to have too much discussion about that, and, you know, the board's thoughts on that can be borne out at that time.
In my mind, I, I feel like this is something that should stay with the planning board. I understand and respect the thought process behind having a separate committee, but at the same time, I feel like we can solicit the input from other boards and committees and compile it, and we're knee-deep in this stuff already, and we're in the best position to translate that into a good document, and so...
I, I agree with Tanner and Bane. I also think we should be proactive, I mean, initiating a discussion. Can we send out a letter on behalf of this board of what we're doing, just so they're aware of it? So we're not like, hey, we need your input two weeks before they, we expect it. Again, it's just inviting them to enter into the discussion and just making them aware of what we're doing, you know, open space, Board of Selectmen, anyone we feel is relevant.
I, I agree, and I think that goes back to the visioning session. If we have a visioning session and invite all the relevant parties, as well as, you know, the community, and so that everyone is aware of what we're doing. And we get that vision before we go forward and hire someone to work with us.
And again, at least, the least we can do is invite them to come. I mean, if they don't want to come, that's up to them, but, and again, we shouldn't just rely on the postings and the agendas in our meetings. We should be proactive and say, hey, look, this is what we're doing. We invite you to come and participate in the discussion.
So I hate to keep adding stuff to your to-do list, Adam, but if you could possibly, and I'm not looking for right away, but get a list of dates and times that we've done this stuff before, and so that we can have a total list of all the times that we've addressed this in the last few years? Because I know we had a visioning session a couple of years ago. It was at least a couple of years ago. Damon was still with us.
As I say, the planning board has not done any visioning since I've been here.
We had, we had a group of people come here, and we split up into five groups, and we had whiteboards, and everybody was throwing stuff up there.
That was on the Village Center District.
Yeah, that was, I think that was before I got here, and that was...
That was the Village Center District, and it was a great session.
That had some great input.
That was a great session, and, but that was on the Village Center District.
Okay.
But that's the kind of thing I would like to see us do before, and that's going to, to me, mold how we write the RFP.
I will help you come up with that list, since, since, I, I think it's important that we, and, and I've got a fairly good recollection of different things that we've done in, in the recent past, so I certainly am, plus I need to come work with you on the Survey Monkey thing for Stormwater anyway. So, yes, and, and, you know, it's very important that we recognize all the work that we have done, just like we've, we've mentioned a couple of times, there's been a good number of times that we've invited the public... mentioned a couple of times, there's been a good number of times that we've invited the public. There's a good number of times that we've been pretty much alone. There's a good number of times that the turnout has been great. The recent walkability study was fabulous. There were, there were like 30 people.
Pretty close.
That was, that was great. That was super informative. I expect that the, I expect that the Unitil thing would bring some more people in. Once more people are aware of what's going on. I honestly not sure that we're even ready to start thinking about an RFP until we actually get an awareness built up of what we've done in the last 20 years.
Couldn't agree more.
Okay, beautiful. So, you know, just because we have money, it doesn't mean we have to spend it.
Right away. We, I think we will do it, but I want to make sure we do it thoughtfully.
Yep. I totally agree on the thoughtfulness. Anybody have anything more on the RFP?
Just a question on the meeting. I want to let you know I will be gone from the 8th to the 16th. So if you do choose to meet on the 15th, I will, I will not be at the meeting on the 8th. I do plan to attend the second meeting.
Okay, so we should just consider doing it for the 22nd?
On the 22nd.
That's fine.
How, what do we expect that Unitil hearing to look like? I mean, that's gonna be...
It's tentative. I, I don't know.
Oh, is that dependent upon their progress?
Yes.
Of what we've asked?
Yeah, and, and they're only, they're not doing the entire length that they spoke about. They're doing more or less the portion that we've, that we walked with them, and then a small finger down Lemonster Road.
Would be helpful to have another part, not just the municipal section, but...
Well, I, I think, I, I was driving back from, to the office from home, and I saw the forester out with officers raid at his house. So, they've gone at least far enough down that they're into the residential portion. And they were, you know, they were looking at trees, and they were walking back and forth, so it wasn't...
Just the municipal.
Yeah, it, it, it's not just gonna be that, that triangle, and I am gonna inform the Board of Selectmen that that's coming up, because ultimately, they would be the ones, I think, who would have to bless any, any tree removal.
On municipal.
On municipal land as, as the property owner.
Along those lines, I feel like we should have the tree warden
Yes.
involved in that whole process.
He will certainly be offered the opportunity to participate.
Now, when you say they're not doing the whole thing, does that mean, I'm not, I'm not quite clear on what that means. They had shown us an area of intended ground-to-sky clearing?
Correct.
They're, they're, they're shrinking their, their locus?
They're just gonna do the phases.
Yes, and no. Yes, because what they were looking for was the board to say, "We're not going to just say no, or we're not going to reduce it to 10% of what you're looking to get." And the board across the board said, "Well, we're not willing to make that commitment. We like the idea of the process, but we really need to understand, you know, we need to see the work that you do, so we can decide whether or not we're gonna endorse it or not." And Unitil said, "Well, that's a big area and a lot of money, so why don't we start with the area that we've already started, and we'll go in-depth to the point that we could do a public hearing for, I'll call it Phase 1. We'll come and do that public hearing for Phase 1. If the board says no, then we'll just stop, and we'll go back to regular pruning. If the board looks at it and can give us, you know, a significant amount of what we're asking for that we feel is reasonable and, and, and safety-related, then that will frame how we do the remainder of it." So, they, they were, the board was unwilling to give them sort of a full endorsement. They were unwilling to expend the time and effort to do the full survey. So, the compromise was, let's do a small portion of it as an initial hearing to the full detail, but not the full extent of, of where they'd like to do the resiliency program.
Can I make a comment on that, even though it's not on our agenda?
Yeah.
I think that it's a very poor idea to have the trial run be in the center of town.
I think that was some of the discussion with them, and, and I think they felt that they'd already invested a fair amount of work on that portion.
I really...
I, I, I understand what you're saying.
Okay.
I mean, I can communicate to that, that, to them, but I think they had...
I don't want that to be just me. I want, I want consensus.
Well, Tanner actually said that at the last meeting, I believe, to start somewhere else.
Well, my comment along those lines was looking at phasing things, because that is clearly a area that people would be very concerned about. I had a couple of quick comments that I think would make sense to pass along to Unitil and kind of know what we're getting into. One is, are, do we know if they're getting the permission from the private property owners? I know I saw...
That would be my expectation.
No, they said they would.
They said they would.
They would, but prior to the hearing?
Yes. My understanding from the conversations that I had with members of the Unitil staff when we were doing that walk, and what they said here publicly was, "We come to the hearing with all the permissions that we would need."
Okay.
And we have, you know, the notes, and, and those people know about it, and, and they're aware that the hearing is happening. So, my understanding is they've had all of those conversations prior to them filing for the hearing.
Yeah, because I've seen them out there, and, and two occasions, they were talking to the private property owners, and it's just, I think it's beneficial to us as the board to know that, okay, all of these trees have been greenlighted, and then we're making the final decision knowing actual numbers.
Correct.
Versus, they come in and ask for permission to take down 80 trees.
And they find out...
And we say no, but theoretically, 60 of the 80 trees, the private property owner could have said no, and if we knew it was 20 trees was the remainder, we'd probably say yes to the 20, versus the 80, just hypothetically. And then, the other thing was, whatever we can do to encourage them to put us in a position where we have, like, a number score, or some sort of, like, measuring metric, whatever, to evaluate these trees, I just, I feel like if they rolled the entire program out, we, we should have a very objective way to evaluate whether the tree goes or stays. I mean, there's a lot of trees in that area, and to look at each one on a case-by-case basis, I think, would be very tiresome. I mean, based on their numbers, they had between three and four miles, and we're looking to potentially remove 100 trees per mile?
Potentially.
I mean, that's three or 400 trees we're gonna evaluate individually, like...
Over a certain caliber or something like that.
Yeah.
Well, anything under six doesn't qualify under scenic roads.
Yeah. But...
But, you know, I mean, a six-inch, a, a four-inch tree isn't gonna do damage to the wires that a, that a 24-inch tree is.
So, I, it, so, to whatever extent we can communicate to them, just to prepare their presentation in a way that we can try to be as objective as possible, and then hopefully use that same standard moving forward as a continued subsequent phases, so...
So, that was a little bit of a wander from our agenda, but I'm glad we got that stuff out. So, have we finished talking about the RFP for master plan? Any more comments on that?
Sounds like it.
All right, we'll move right into the economic development.
So, this was mentioned already. The Board of Selectmen had appointed, or developed a scope and membership for an Economic Development Committee, and month, six weeks ago, decided to cancel them, I guess, for...
Table.
Table, not, they, but they, they withdrew the charge, they dissolved the committee.
Disbanded.
Uh, disbanded.
No, the unanimous motion was to table it. I was at that meeting.
Okay, well, but they, they, they tabled the thoughts of economic development from the Board of Selectmen's perspective, but I thought that they functionally disbanded the, the committee.
Well, I think by tabling it, that it functionally did, because the town manager had already reached out to people asking for...
For appointments.
Right.
So, after that, the chair and I, and the town manager had a brief email exchange, and it was suggested through the chair that the Planning Board may wish to take up economic development and the formation of an Economic Development Committee. I don't know if that's, so, hence, it's on the agenda. Last meeting was our first agenda after the election. In our discussion, I suggested that we wait till after the election, so we had a full board of people who would at least be here for a year, and solicit their input on whether or not this was something they felt the Planning Board may wish to go forward with, and take under their, their auspices.
I, I think it's something that we need as a community. I'd be very interested to see the scope that the town manager did. But I believe it's something that we should do. It's something we keep talking about, and I think we need to see movement on it, so I would like to see this banned, appoint an Economic Development Committee.
What would the function of it be?
Well, for one, they could help us on my master plan.
Well, that's what I'm...
Well, that, that would be up to you if you were creating it. Generally, an Economic Development Committee works as a go-between for the municipal government, business associations, local businesses, and is an advisory group on matters related to economic development. And how you frame that is up to whomever creates them. You could, they could be a business attraction entity, they could be a business retention entity, they could be a business resources entity, they could be some combination of those things. Oftentimes, you see them, this is one of the committees where sometimes non-residents can be appointed as ex officio members if they're business owners within the community, because they have sort of a, a different perspective. They're not making policy, they're not making decisions, they're offering advice and perspective, and, and as a business owner, they have a distinct point of view that somebody else might not have. But usually, what they're there to do is to take the temperature of the business community and, and work with the government, whether it's the town manager, the Board of Selectmen, the Planning Board, or, or other entities, on how they can facilitate making business successful in the community. And it can be as expansive or as limited as, as each, each community wants. You know, I, I don't think we're gonna go out and attract Amazon, so I don't think that that's what we would, what we would try and, and get someone to do, but and, and we really don't have a lot of vacant storefronts. But maybe there are things that we can do that would foster more business development in some way, or expansion, or employment.
Okay, yeah, that's... I think it's needed. I think it would be helpful.
I think it makes sense for it to be under the Planning Board in the sense that many of their recommendations would flow through planning, in terms of zoning, and bylaws, and regulations, and site plan review. A lot of what helps economic development is subject to decisions that this board makes. My only concern is, clearly, the Board of Selectmen didn't support the concept, or found fault with it, and if we're not on the same page with them, I don't want to see people invest a lot of time in something only to find that it's not supported on that end of things, because...
And I don't know the charge off the top of my head. I was at the meeting where they canceled them, and the charge had to do with agricultural business and encouraging, I don't know if it said agrotourism, or... And I, my recollection was, there was some question about why it was focused the way it was focused, and what does this mean, and what does that mean, and do we really want to do this, and it was at the time where there was four Selectmen, so there wasn't a, a majority on either side, and, and I think it was kind of a two-to-two of, you know, "Well, we don't like this. Well, we like this," and it kind of went back and forth, and I, I think ultimately, they just said, "You know what? Fine, we'll, we'll, we'll put this on hold for now." With the new board, I don't, you know, I don't know. And again, similar to the master plan, I would expect the Economic Development Committee is going to be multidisciplinary, multi-board focused. So, you have the opportunity to get that input from the Board of Selectmen through an appointment of a member of the Board of Selectmen, and I, I take your point. I don't, I don't know that you're necessarily working against them. I think there was some question of the specifics of it and how it was being implemented.
So, it didn't really, it doesn't sound like it, they disagreed with the concept, it just wasn't clear enough, and the ambiguity derailed the process.
And I think the ambiguity of, of what does Lundenberg expect from economic development has been hanging out there for, for two or more years.
That's one of the things I would think that the Economic Development would try to find the answer to. Looking at the charge from another community, help attract, retain, and grow businesses and jobs, and improve the economic environment, help increase the value and desirability of our community by supporting the needs of the current commercial and industrial businesses, promote appropriate development, redevelopment, renewal of commercial property. So, I think, you know, and, and I've looked at four towns just while I'm sitting here, and they all have that same, very similar characteristics. So I think looking at the scope that was prepared by the town manager, and then perhaps we tweak that. But as you said, it should consist of members from all of the various boards, or for a number of the various boards. So I think it makes sense, and as Tanner said, I think it should be under planning. If we're talking about development and redevelopment, and, and ecotourism and agrotourism, that's directly related to planning.
I'm, I'm not entirely sure how appropriate it would be to have board members be involved, because it's been in our lap for two years. We've had this opportunity, we've had this outreach, and the board members haven't been able to get much done. Maybe we should let the business owners. Maybe they're more motivated.
Well, it's usually, it's usually a mix of both.
Yeah.
I mean, most of the ones that I've seen are a member of the Planning Board, a member of the Select Board, a member, several members of the business community,
Residents at large.
Members of the Finance Committee, members at large. It's usually a mix, because you can't have just a resident, you need some input from the Planning Board and the Board of Selectmen, or we're gonna end up...
And, and a large group is less problematic for a committee like this, because they're not adjudicating, they're not decision-making, they're...
They're actually trying to help each other.
They, they, yeah, they're, they're conversing and recommending, and so the more diversity you have, and, you know, I've, I've worked in communities where they have economic development committees, and have the business roundtables, and the more people you have in the loop, the better, because you, you'll find that one month, half of them show up, and the next month, the other half show up, and then some other combination shows up, and you're constantly having similar conversations that have a lot of different input, because different people are talking to each other.
I would also like to take this opportunity to, again, plug farming and agriculture. The APR properties that we have in town, I believe there's 10 of them currently. Lonnie's might be the 10th, and they're not quite finished yet. The process of APR, well, APR Agricultural Preservation Restriction, where the, the landowner chooses to restrict their property to only be used for commercial agriculture in perpetuity. So, commercial, it is commercial, and it is agriculture, and before we had the Right to Farm Bylaw and the Agricultural Commission formed, the town paid 90% of whatever the cost was provided to the landowner, and, and the state paid 10. And now that we have the AgCom and the Right to Farm Bylaw, that's been reduced to 80% from the town, and 20% from the state. So, once a property has been APR'd, the town has already made a considerable investment in that property. The town has invested money, effectively. So, for these APR properties to say, "Okay, you're APR now," and then just leave them be, is kind of like we've done with all of our buildings. It's, it's, we've invested money and then not taken care of it properly, in my mind. So, that's, that, that's getting back to my idea about extending infrastructure to the APR properties.
And again, I, I'm, while I, I'm listening to you, we need to be very, very careful.
No doubt. But that's just, that's, and that fits with the economic development that, that I'm looking for, and that I've heard a lot of the input at these discussions be, nobody can really agree upon anything, but a resounding commonality is agriculture and farming. So, there was a charge... So, there was a charge that was formed, so there's documentation, right?
Correct.
Has that been sent out to us?
It has not, I can get it for you.
Okay.
I didn't want to jump the gun and have, you know, four members say, no, we don't want to do this.
And perhaps you could get a couple other, there are a couple other samples so that we can look at what was prepared and then kind of come up with our own.
Not like Lomenster and Fitchburg.
Similar towns.
Oh, I was going to go for Worcester, Springfield, Boston.
Ah.
Topsfield and Littleton.
Do we need to make a motion to initiate this process?
No, I'll start doing this, and then, you said you're here on the 8th, Paula?
No, I am not.
Okay.
No, the 8th and the 15th, she's not available.
Yeah, so, maybe we'll do this the first meeting in August.
Yeah, I'll be here the 22nd.
Yeah, but I don't want to pack the 22nd with a bunch of long, yeah. So we'll, we'll put the first meeting in August, we'll, we'll talk about this, and I'll, I'll get that stuff together for you for then.
So maybe we should take a straw poll amongst us, who thinks master planning is, okay, so ranking master planning versus economic development. Two weeks, it's only a month, I guess, so makes...
It's really two weeks. Because it's, it's 22nd, it's the 22nd, and then it's, I think, the 5th of August or something like that is the second.
Does anybody feel strongly about that?
Can you repeat that, please?
Well, we've, we've decided to put master planning on for the 22nd, right? Yes.
And now we're deciding to put economic development discussion on, in the first week of August, second week of August.
Which is August 13th.
Well, and in terms of the economic development...
No, it can't be August 13th, can it?
I'm sorry, August 12th.
In terms of economic development, the committee, I assume we're just looking to formulate the composition?
Right, right. To form a charge.
The charge and the composition.
In favor of it, in my mind, you know, if we had her thoughts prior to the meeting, then we can kind of incorporate all that.
We depend, I'm going to be in, I'm going to be in Australia, so whether or not I'll be able to comment on it is questionable.
No, I'm just saying like an email that says, you know, this is kind of my thought process.
If you were able to get me the previous charge and a couple samples, I'll be happy to try to do it before I go, but I don't know how quickly you can do that.
I think, I think with wanting stuff from other communities and having time to think about the charge, I think, I don't think the 12th of August is going to throw you into, I mean, it's not going to, personally, I don't think it's going to change much in, in timing, you know, if you did it on the 8th, you still have to seat everybody, and, I mean, it's, if you want it for the 8th, we can try and do that, I just...
It was just a thought, that's all.
Well, when, when I reached out to Adam and Heather, my, my, my thought was that it's already been done, it's all ready to go, it's already been, they've already pulled the trigger on it, they've already invited people to come to it, they've already invited people to, groups to make appointments for this group.
Yeah, but we would decide the charge.
But we would decide the charge, it may be different, it may be different than what...
We can discuss it, yeah, but I mean...
I think the charge should be a little bit broader than what they had.
I, I agree, I agree.
Not, I think we would limit ourselves if we focus on certain, certain businesses.
Well, I think it should be an element, I think it should be a broader charge.
And I think there's a conversation the board needs to have as they develop that charge, which is why I think having some time to think about it is...
I would like to be here for that discussion if at all possible, but if the remaining members want to, want to go ahead and have it on the 8th, obviously you can do that.
Oh, I wasn't, I was thinking about the 22nd instead of the 12th.
Okay, okay.
I'm bumping the master plan stuff so that...
I guess it doesn't make much difference, two weeks is two weeks.
I think we should do the master plan first, that's a more pressing issue to get started on, I think.
So then we want to put 12 for the economic?
Yeah.
All right, so next is earth removal?
Uh, yeah, I don't have anything on that, that was inadvertent. Open Space Ad Hoc Committee, there are, well, there are, as far as I understand, two vacancies. No one has made a request to fill those vacancies. One is Ashley Millet and one is Rich Brockelman. I did speak with Brandon Kibbie a little while ago, and he, he's the Chair of Open Space, indicated that Rich had told him he was going to be done when the plan got approved, so the plan hasn't been received final approval. There are some corrections and additions that the, the state wants in the plan. I don't know if Mr. Brockelman will come back and work with the committee for the next month or two that it takes them to finalize that, but I do know that Ms. Millet is, is not, not coming back, so we'll have to fill those vacancies.
Were those both citizens at large?
I believe that they were.
Is that something we advertise as a vacancy?
We certainly can advertise it. It's, it's an ad hoc committee, so it's a little less formal than some of the other ones, and doesn't necessarily have as many written procedures around it. We can place an ad in the ledger, we can put something on the website, but if you know anybody or want to do it yourself, you certainly could get appointed if you asked.
Well, I think it'd be worth advertising in the spirit of getting more people involved and more opinions and thoughts on things, and then if nobody comes forward, then we look at alternatives. I mean, I wouldn't be opposed to sitting on the committee, but I would defer to anybody that, from the community, that wants to fill the role first.
I would very much like to sit on the committee.
So if we advertise for 30 days and then see what we get?
Those are member-at-large positions?
They are.
Then anybody should be able to apply for them.
Yeah, so I think what I'll do is I'll advertise and have July 22nd, it's not quite 30 days, but I know that the Open Space Committee is meeting that night to start talking about what needs to be done, and if somebody can, we can fill it that evening, even though it's after their meeting, I don't think they'll have sorted the, the issues that were outlined that night.
Well, shouldn't the Open Space Committee have, if, if we do get applicants, shouldn't the Open Space have an opportunity to talk with them?
Yeah, so if we, if I, if I, if we close it the week before, we could forward them to Open Space, they'll be meeting that evening, and they could either walk over here or send some sort of communication that we talked, and this is, this is who we've...
That would also give us an opportunity to find out whether the other members...
Correct, whether Mr. Brockelman is, yeah.
Whether we're going for one or two.
And I know Brandon was going to reach out to him, I just hadn't heard back, and I mean, there's time between now and then to do that, but...
All right, anything else on that?
Nope.
MRPC board rep?
You guys need to pick a, an MRPC rep.
Monarch Regional Planning Commission, commission, committee? Committee, I think.
Commission, commission.
Is it a commission? MJTC is also a commission, not a committee?
They're a committee.
That's a committee.
They're a committee, the MRPC is a commission. Too many Cs.
Do you know what night they meet?
Thursdays?
Yeah, that was the Thursday. Yeah, see, that's the problem. Do you know what Thursday of the month?
First Thursday.
I could potentially do that.
And they're also at the Doyle Center?
They are at the Doyle Center.
If it's the first Thursday, I could do it, if it's the second or fourth, I cannot, so.
Yeah.
Are you sure it's the first?
Almost positive, I'll look at our esteemed former rep.
Yeah, it's the first Thursday, they shift it around occasionally, but it's the first Thursday. I think there was only one incident where they shifted it forward, but I would imagine, doesn't MJTC meet in the same room?
But they meet on Wednesdays.
They meet on Wednesdays.
Oh, okay, all right, so...
I would be willing to serve if, if this board approves that.
I'd like to make a motion to nominate Ms. Bertram for MRPC.
Second? I guess, are there any other nominations? All right, seeing none, any discussion, all those in favor of nominating Ms. Bertram for the MRPC?
Aye.
Aye. Excellent, unanimous. Thank you.
Town meeting follow-up, I mean, you were more or less all there.
Pretty much.
Excuse me, the, we've received the AG's review already, we received it before the end of May.
Did they watch all seven hours?
11 hours.
11, that's what I meant, sorry.
No, they, they just go on the information we sent them, and all of our, all the bylaws that were put forward by the planning board were certified by the Attorney General and are now in full force and effect, and we don't have to worry about her office picking apart any of the bylaws that were submitted or amendments, so...
All right, and we're still not even to the extension of the, no, we're not going to decide about the marijuana.
Well, that's why, I think that's why they finish before the end of May. I mean, it's absolutely unheard of for the Attorney General to render a decision within three weeks of town meeting.
We're probably not the only community that did that.
They have, probably not, they, I mean, they have 90 days, and normally, it's usually like day 87 to 89 that we get the letter from them, so it was pleasant, and, I mean, they also have the ability to comment, and they had no comments, they just said, everything's good, move on. So, congratulations, you guys did a nice job on that. Stone Farm, some of you will recall that LaScotti Development was in here with Stone Farm and getting a punch list and bond reduction, and they had about $27,000 or $30,000 worth of work left to do. They haven't done it, and I've been contacted by the Managing Association, which is the homeowners, and they're looking for the work to be done, and they're asking the board claim the bond and get the work done through, through that process. So I'm presenting to the board that that's generally, if the work doesn't get done, it needs to, and that's what the bond is for. So we would set a hearing, the board would claim the bond with, if the work weren't done in a set period of time, that period of time would go by, and then the board would claim the bond and solicit contractors to review the work to be done and execute the work.
Is that punchless, sorry, Mr. Chair, that punch list was through the peer review, right?
Correct. Mr. Walsh went out and did a final review, and the majority of the work was, I mean, it was onesie-twosie stuff, it was some paving on a sidewalk, it was, I think it was replacing brick, catch basin bases with poured concrete because it was a stormwater basin, not a sewer basin, little stuff that just added up to resetting and replacing some ring covers on catch basins that have been clipped by plows over the years, stuff like that.
Do we have a dollar amount on the amount of...
It's about $27,000.
And is that something that's going to warrant Mr. Costa being with us?
Uh, well, I have office hours with him tomorrow, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna speak with him about that, but I just wanted to let the board know that this would be something that we'd be setting up in, in the future.
In my eight years, I don't recall ever having taken a bond.
Uh, it's not, it's not super common, it's not a lot of fun. A lot of times, once you've held the hearing and served them notice, they'll come in mea culpa and they'll go and do it because LaScotti can probably do that work for about $14,000, and the $27,000 is based on prevailing wage and mass highway weighted bid prices, which we have to work with because if we do it, we need to pay prevailing wage. So it may be an exercise in holding the hearing and it gets done, it may be an exercise in having to go all the way through claiming the, the monies.
Have we inquired through them why they haven't completed?
We have, I did send them a letter at Attorney Costa's advisement indicating that they needed to do the work, and we'd be, you know, we'd expect the work done by this, by a certain point, and then we'd be looking at additional remedies and...
Okay, and then we haven't received any kind of a response?
No, no phone call, no, nothing other than the green card that we sent to them.
When something like that goes out, would it be possible to send a copy to the boards who are aware that that is happening?
And just to, to mention, Adam and I were just chatting about the, the extension of the marijuana thing. When we requested, no, when we passed, we passed or requested the extension of the moratorium?
Uh, they, you passed it, the town meeting passed it.
Town meeting passed it, and the AG's response was not okay, it was, we have 90 more days to review, and we're still going to take those 90 days to review, and it ends in July 1st. So they didn't approve the extension, but they effectively let us remain under coverage because enforcement doesn't hap, I mean, it wouldn't have gone away until the AG's response.
And, yeah, what happened was Attorney Costa submitted supplemental information to the AG's office outlining the board's schedule and the draft bylaws that you were currently working on in late December, early January. And so in reviewing that, they asked for additional time. Attorney Costa and the town manager agreed to it, understanding that there was bylaws being presented at the, the following town meeting. So the Attorney General, we probably would have been one of the communities that they overturned the moratorium on if we hadn't been where we were in the process. And that was one of the things that sort of happened after we had the town meeting. The Attorney General had a significant change of heart in, in her interpretation of the moratoriums and their extensions.
And we certainly couldn't have been the only town.
No, no, we weren't. I, I imagine there were other towns who were in a similar spot to us, there were some towns that hadn't done anything, and we're just like, oh, let's extend the moratorium, and, and her office said, no, we're, we're just not going to do that.
Ouch.
So having, having done the work that you had been doing up to that point moved us in the direction that, that got us where we were.
Yay, Lundenberg! Anyways, notices and communications have all been scanned to us, I assume?
Yes, they have.
Meeting schedule, or...
We don't have anything for the 8th as of yet.
Uh, we're not going to have, Paula. We've got a lot of stuff, we've got a lot of stuff that's been hanging around.
Yeah, I think that's a good time to start talking off-street parking and solar. That certainly won't be the only discussion we have, but if we're going to make amendments to those, that's the time to...
How about off-street parking since we just had the walkability study?
I said off-street parking and solar.
Oh.
I said both of those, we, we could start framing that night.
Oh, off-street parking and loading areas, and, and the other one, both of them.
And that, and, yeah, and this is the, that's the calculations, and I have a very, very rough draft that I can have to the board before the 4th to have a discussion about on the 8th. And it wouldn't be nearly finalized that night, but it would be a place to start.
And Paula, do you have strong feelings on either one of those topics?
No, and as Adam said, it won't be the first discussion, so I'll just review the meeting when I get back.
So feel free to submit anything you'd like to have included.
Okay, thank you.
And I always expect there's significant changes after we have the first discussion anyway. And I think we've covered master plan pretty well.
All right, so July 8th, empty, 22, unitill, August 12, economic development.
Just a quick question, and I know it was...
We have this, this public comment has come through, bug comment.
They're beating down the door. Earth removal?
Yes. It'll, it'll, we'll have that for the 8th as well.
Okay.
I, I thought I had sent it out.
It still sits with the Board of Selectmen.
It does, and we're looking to bring it to fall town meeting to switch it to this board, which means they'll do one more year of earth removal, because even if it had gone to May, we probably wouldn't have had it flipped over by August.
Yes, and they renew in August.
Would we be looking to update the process, or are they just...
Yeah, no, it's updating the process, it's adding earth fill to earth removal, it's probably increasing the quantities that trigger earth removal, looking at the exemptions, looking at the, the material that's submitted to the board as far as what they are. The proposal I submitted to the Board of Selectmen included three-year permits instead of annual permits to allow, I mean, because really the, that, that work doesn't change drastically from year to year, but in a three-year cycle, you start to see where, where things happen, and there are allowances for existing permit holders, new permit holders, existing permit holders coming into compliance with the, the new permitting requirements, that kind of stuff.
So is that what you're going to send out?
Yes. And I should send, I should have that out before the end of the day tomorrow.
Okay, one of the, the big things I want to look at is the requirements for closure plans, which I felt were really sadly lacking in the previous regulations, so it's one of the things I'd like to understand what it is that consists of a closure plan. of the things I'd like to understand, what it is that consists of a closure plan.
Okay, and I think that what's in the existing regulations isn't drastically different than what's in the proposed regulations, it's just maybe a little bit clearer about some of the information that would be required.
Mm-hmm.
You know, final elevation, original proposed ground cover, but, you know, if it's a 50-year plan, that could go, they could come in and say, well, we're going to plant grass and fescue, and in, in 50 years, they could say, oh, well, we're going to sell it to this guy, and he's going to build a building. So, I, I think there's some moving target in there, but, yeah, it, there, there is a little bit more detail in there.
Is there any mention currently in, in the current regulation about groundwater? Like, not removing to a certain depth?
I don't, uh, I don't think it's in the regulation, I think it has been conditioned by the board over the years.
No, it has not.
I think we should put something like that.
I absolutely agree.
Well, I know that the Keating permits had something about depth to groundwater.
Okay.
Well, I mean, it's something we can waive, but it should be there.
In the 12 years I was doing earth removal permits, I don't remember ever talking about depth to groundwater on permits. Perhaps it's in the file, but it certainly wasn't something that the board ever talked about.
Yeah, it was, there was a condition on some of the Keating permits about...
But, but there should be a condition in our regulations.
Four-foot separation to groundwater.
But there should be a, it should be a component of our regulations.
All right, any more board comments or concerns? Speak now, or hold your peace until the 8th.
I'm good.
I would accept a motion to adjourn.
I move that we adjourn.
Second?
Any discussion about adjournment? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much.